Okay, we're live.
Can't hear you, Jim.
You'd think a year into this, I'd figure out how to turn off the mute button. Oh, welcome everyone. I'm calling us to order. I don't even know if I'll be able to get my hands on that actual real gavel in real life. One of these, one of these days, waited all this time just to bang the gavel. We are called to order and Eli, have you taken attendance?
Yes, I have.
I'd like to hear a motion. Thank you. I'd like your motion to approve the agenda this evening.
So motion. Second.
Is there any discussion of the agenda? All right, roll call vote, please.
Okay, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman?
Yes.
Trustee Leha?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Solomon?
Yes.
And trustee Trudeau?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Perfect. Agenda is approved. That moves us on to the consent. Agenda may have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Moved. Second.
Any discussion of the consent agenda this evening? All right. We'll have a roll call vote then.
Okay, trustee Ackman?
Yes.
Trustee Kleinman?
Yes.
Trustee Leha?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Solomon?
Yes.
Trustee Trudeau?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thanks, everyone. All right, first round of citizens' comments. What do we have tonight?
Okay, so we've received one comment that is in video and I'm going to play that for you right now.
Thanks very much.
Can everyone see it? Okay, here we go.
Hello, my name is Dr. Maya Barrick and I live in Oak Park, Michigan. I've come here today as an Ann Arbor native and a community high school graduate, as well as an assistant professor of criminology and criminal justice at the University of Michigan Dearborn. The Ann Arbor District Library recently created a community high school archive that includes a digitized collection of CHS yearbooks. I certainly recognize the value of documenting our school's rich history and mission. However, the digitized public archive raises a number of important concerns. In particular, Google image searches of individual student names now return labeled photographs, headshots, and candidates of students appearing in CHS yearbooks published from 1974 through 2010. Aside from general questions of privacy, there are many reasons why individuals and their families may be incredibly uncomfortable with this. The most pressing being, one, matters of gender identity and sexual orientation, especially for individuals who no longer identify with the sex that they were assigned at birth. And two, matters of safety, especially for those who may be survivors of domestic violence or abuse, as well as those who may have experienced or be experiencing stalking. These issues are not independent and have exacerbated impacts when combined. Indeed, alum who have transitioned now find that their dead names are fully searchable on the internet along with photographs of them pre-transition. Not only can this be psychologically harmful, it can be dangerous if someone is outed as trans in an unsafe situation. It is one thing for public high school yearbooks to be available in a school library or a local public library, keeping in mind, for example, that most Ann Arbor District Library content while public is only accessible online if one logs in with a library account. It is another thing for students' names and photos to be placed out in the open on the internet. Students and their parents had a reasonable expectation to some amount of protection on the part of the Anna Republic Schools with regard to the content in these yearbooks, especially as most of the students pictured in these yearbooks were minors. We also had a reasonable expectation of respect. Respect of our agency, our individuality, and our choices as to how, where, and when we publicly distribute or don't distribute our likenesses. The lack of consent and transparency apparent in this grave misstep on the part of the Ann Arbor District Library, the Anna Republic Schools, and Community High School is antithetical to the values of our city and community. Anna Republic School students' identifiable information and images should not be publicly accessible through Google image search, period. The Ann Arbor District Library and the Anna Republic School should remove or restrict access to these photographs immediately. Thank you.
And that's the only comment that we've received thus far.
Thank you, Eli. I want to appreciate that comment as our first video comment in the virtual era. And I also, we don't usually comment on citizens' comments, but I might open up space for Eli or Josie to respond if they like to right now.
I can, Eli can help me with this. We received this video comment after receiving several emails from other individuals with pretty much the same objection to the community high school yearbooks being on the library's website. They've been up since November. They were not up before November. They went up in November. The school board was also emailed and we've been in contact with them. We made the decision today to take that content down. So anyone who is interested in information in a yearbook can email us or call. And to the extent that we can get it to them digitally, we will send it to them as an attachment. But otherwise, they can see those yearbooks as real items eventually. But we do not feel that the value of having the data up is, it doesn't stand against the complaint and the concerns. So we made this decision to take it down. But it is still that, we still have this information. It's digitized for posterity. And we will have it and we will keep it. But it's, and it's while it's still indexed by Google for a short period of time, it's findable that way. Once it's not, it won't be anymore. So Eli, you're welcome to clarify my comments if they need it.
The only thing I'd add is that we received a total of three comments about this. Two of them were yesterday and this one arrived this morning.
Thank you, Josie. Are there any questions or reflections that others have right now regarding this particular topic? All right.
I'll just say, I really appreciate that decision and I think that that is the right thing to do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anna. All right, moving along, financial reports. Back to Josie.
That is me. So on page 14 through 18, you'll find the months, the financial reports for this past month. And so I wanted to just make sure, you can always ask me during the financial reports about the vendor check register, even though you've approved it in the consent agenda. At the same time, I want to make sure you know you can ask questions about it at this point. So the financial report begins on page 14 with the summary for the seven months ended January 31st, 2021. So the cash is, including investments decreased $1,354,075 and on December 30th, 2020, to $17,756,340 as of January 31st, 2021. Right now, we've received 99.8% of the annual budgeted tax receipts for this year, which is incredible, based on what was considered to likely happen during COVID. So I'm very, very happy about that. Total cash receipts through January, end of January equals $17,809,673. So that is something, that's a very important aspect of this. On page 15, on the expenditures, what I tend to point out is that the actual cash receipts are 99.88% of the budget and the actual cash expended is 53.86% of the budget. And so, and I'm always reminding you that it's an accrual budget. But we have that there to give you a picture of the actuals right now. So, and then grants and memorials have not changed fundamentally since the last time you saw the financials. On page 16, it's the balance sheet of the governmental funds, which is the complete picture of the library's fund. The library's funds. So it's the general fund, the capital fund, restricted grants, and our total governmental funds are there. And our assets, liabilities, deferred outflows, fund balance, total liabilities and fund balances. And then on page 17, it's the general fund, which we tend to talk about in terms of our operational fund. The budget you approve, the line items, for the most part. And that's what this looks like. The January actual, the year-to-date, what the budget is for this current year and the budget remaining and the percentage. We added that too for helpful clarification. So you'll see, again, that interest income line is way over in revenue than it was projected to be. And others are way less. And some are just because of COVID and it was possible it was going to happen that way, like the library fines, fees, and others. 8.32% of the budgets come in and that's because we haven't been charging fines and fees. And the non-resident fees, that is obviously because no one is paying for a non-resident card right now this year at the public library. So that's revenue that won't likely come in. Rental revenue, that's for the Westgate Sweetwaters. We have abated that rent until we reopen for browsing, so to help to sort of give them some support out there. And so that's why you're seeing that number is lower. So we discussed that at the last board meeting, so I wanted to make sure I bring that back up to you. We also, in our last week's e-newsletter, we supported them by reminding people who go to Westgate to pick up material that they're open, that the Sweetwaters is open. So it's not so easy to know that because of their location. It's tucked into that little plaza, but they are open. Then the expenditures are pretty normal for what we do. What you'll see is that, you know, where it's really low is in seminars, conferences, and travel. People aren't traveling. Seminars and conferences, there are fewer of them and they're online. And often, if a staff member wants to attend something, we're definitely approving it. But for the most part, people are not. There are not so many and they're not expensive usually either. So that line is not being used and that's just choices people are making. But overall, everything is in the 47 to 55%, which is, you know, we're a little bit more than halfway through the year. So it looks pretty good that way. I don't see anything in this that causes me any concerns or worries, but I'm actually happy to answer any questions you have. And then on page 18 is the statement of revenues and expenditures for the governmental fund. So it's the, shows you all of them with the expenditures and the fund balance. This is everything, capital fund, restricted grants, and the general fund, all in a picture. So if there are any questions about the financials, I'm happy to answer them. Yes, Molly?
This is sort of a minor question about the non-resident fees, but I'm curious whether that remains available for people because there are a lot of library services that we can access even with the buildings closed. And I'm curious if there's been any interest in that.
It is available if a person wants to purchase a non-resident card, but obviously, I mean, it's just not been. And I will say too, if you look at past year's budgets, it's a pretty steady number and not a lot of revenue from non-resident cards. But generally, you know, it's probably $11,000, $12,000 a year, if I'm guessing and my memory is correct. It's not tons. It's $150 for a household a year, which is not a lot of money unless, you know, not a lot for revenue for the library. Take a lot of people buying cards for that to add up. So none this year. So it's good. Thank you for asking. It surprised me too to see none.
I'm just thinking about the ebooks alone. It seems like it might be worthwhile.
I think that it might be an issue because those are not coming in via check right now because we do not have anything happening at the desk. They are only being booked as fees. The people who are renewing their online.
So you're saying, Eli, they're coming in as, they're coming into the library fines and fees line?
Right, because the only way we can bill someone right now is to apply the fee to their account and then they pay it the same way that they would pay a fee.
So that makes me have a question. Are we tracking, are we tracking the non-residents?
We know how many of them have been renewed.
Okay, so, okay. So we'll find that out next time, Molly, and let you know. Because I didn't know that either. I wondered about it myself. Okay. I hadn't asked the right question.
There's clearly a lot less of them because most of the non-resident are typically people who commute into Ann Arbor for work. That's who the main audience is. But we have had a few renewals and maybe one or two new since we closed in March.
Okay, thanks for asking, Molly.
Thanks.
Yeah. Anyone else? Anything else? Thank you.
All right, thank you, Josie. Moving on to committee reports. The executive committee met before this meeting at 5:45, 6:45. That will generally, I think, be our pattern for this year, which will be to meet about an hour or so before the public meeting. What we discussed in the executive committee meeting, we briefly touched on the space use agreement with the Friends of the Library, which is an annual renewal. And we discussed the agreement in light of the fact that the building is not, that none of our buildings are open with volunteers in them right now. So we will bring the agreement to the full board as we always do for discussion. And, you know, it will look very similar to how it has in past years. We spent a little bit of time talking about formally eliminating overdue fines for media items, which is books, CDs, DVDs. This does not include tools, but eliminating overdue fines for media items in light of our upcoming budget planning process. This has been, for those who have been here for a little bit, this has been an item of discussion over the years. The library has had a very, very liberal fines policy. The librarians and staff are empowered to waive fines. Many will remember that when we transitioned our website a few years ago, we waved, we wiped all, the slate clean of all fines and the whole system. So in practice, we've had a very liberal and kind of approach to how we deal with fines because we don't want people to be unfairly penalized and create inequalities in our system. So Josie and Eli are thinking it's time to bring this forward to the board as part of our next budget cycle and to have a conversation about how we might move forward with a budget that eliminates overdue fines. So that's going to be a topic for the full board at the March meeting. And then we spent a bit of time getting an update from Josie on the commons at Library Lane and the Committee of the Commons, which has been charged with with developing a concept for the commons at Library Lane. At this point in time, there isn't any, there really isn't anything for us to do or, but Josie is doing a very good job of just sort of letting us know what's happening with the committee as this space, of course, exists right next door to our space. So although officially, we have no, we have no relationship to that space, that lot, that group, et cetera. And then we reviewed the agenda for tonight. And that's all that I have to report from Executive Committee. What questions do you have? All right. Great. More to come. Moving on to Budget and Finance Committee. Dharma?
Hi there. I think we met last week. Was it last week? Time, what is time? So Scott, Jamie, and I met last week with Josie and Eli. And really, it was just an introduction for Scott to understand the big picture of the budget, how we do the budgeting. We basically just talked about the timeline, which I guess I'll bring up because some of you are new. So we have the draft budget in April. The board will be asked to pass it in May. So you'll be seeing something soon. Of course, the Finance Committee will be seeing something a little bit sooner. And we're not expecting major changes to the budget. That's about it. Scott, did I miss anything important?
No, I was just looking at my notes and that, I think, covers everything. I did appreciate the thorough sort of recent history of just stepping through kind of how the process has gone in years past and how we've arrived into the current arrangement. And it was helpful orientation for me, for sure.
We're happy to have you. Any questions?
Great.
Thanks.
Thanks, Dharma. All right, moving on to the Director's Report. Josie, back to you.
All right, so I'll let you know in advance, this is a pretty significant Director's Report this time, which is always a good thing if you're the director, but I'm not so sure how you all will feel about it. So we had a question last month about Zoom rooms and where we got the idea. And we wanted to let you know that we got this idea from the Elmhurst, Illinois Public Library. And our Zoom room use is great. People are very happy with it. And we just wanted to make sure you knew where that came from. Someone asked us about that. And so in the spirit of bravery, the legacy of Buffalo Soldiers in Detroit. The photographer Cynthia Ellis has captured images from the Buffalo Soldiers Detroit Stables and shared the stories of the volunteers and their visitors through her lens. And this is a digital exhibit of photography that will go up. It's 24 photographs. And you can see it now at the URL below. So this will, I think this is of interest to just about anyone, but I like it a lot. Culinary historians, who knew? The ADL event was featured in a national publication this year and it was about the history of baking powder. It's the New York Times. And consequently, it was the February event called Baking Powder Wars, the Cutthroat Food Fight, the Revolution of Cooking. And because it was going to be a good event, it was going to have interest, but because of the New York Times' interest in it, we had a capacity crowd of 300 people in the Zoom presentation about this. So we were very, very pleased. And we have a long relationship with the culinary historians in Ann Arbor. And so, good for them, good for Ann Arbor, that baking powder brought this great crowd to what they do and how well they do it. The Washon Reed Featured Event 2021 was author event with Jason Reynolds and Brendan Kiley. I'm pleased that we've had more than 130 people who've viewed this so far. It's outstanding. It's there for anyone to go and watch it anytime and I recommend it. These two authors met as speakers for their publisher. They became great friends unexpectedly to them both and they talk about that. And then they wrote a book together, The All-American Boys. And if you haven't read that, I recommend that as well. But this was, it's just great fun to watch and listen. It's also very, it's very, it's exactly what you'd expect. They want us all to feel discomfort in our privilege, whatever that privilege is. And they talk about that. And so I'm recommending it. And I want to thank Sarah Waddell, who is our collections manager, who was our representative on the Washon Reed Committee. And she did a fabulous job pulling all this together this year in this way. All right, thank you. The winter game continues. They're already talking about 2021 summer game. But we have a few weeks left and I wanted to make sure that you see how many active players are involved. And so this turned out to be the right thing to do at the right time for people who are really beginning to feel stuck inside. And you, okay, thank you. And you also know that many of our events, lobby events, we have moved online. And this will include this year's 2021 Washon County CSA Fair. And so we're partnering with Taste the Local Difference and to do something online so that people can see what's available in terms of CSAs in Washon County. We're glad to be able to do this too. So in licensing news, we have more downloadable titles from the Wayne State University Press, which we're very pleased about. And we renewed our agreement with local music label Quiet Scientific for access to their catalog as well. Thank you. And Detroit Public TV has launched something called the Michigan Learning Channel, MLC, and is seeking to address equity gaps in K-12 education linked to students, the students engage in their distance learning because of inadequate, who have trouble with that because of inadequate internet access or lack of devices in the home by being a partner for teachers. And consequently, they will be airing ADL Storytime sometime in the month of March with their new Michigan Learning Channel. So we've worked through an agreement with them, worked through our attorneys and to be able to do this. We were very pleased to be asked and we're very happy to be a part of something that is working hard to address the equity gaps for children without access. Thank you. This one is Jacob Gorski, who is the creator and host of the ADL Podcast, The Gayest Generation, who works with us, participated in a Zoom event with Uma's Irving Sten Jr. Curatorial Fellow, Sean Kramer, hosted by Uma. And they discussed their discoveries while digging into Ann Arbor's queer history for their respective projects. And ADL plans to host a similar event for its patrons sometime in March. And we're very happy to be able to do this with Uma. And if you haven't listened to Jacob's podcast, please take an opportunity. And it doesn't matter which one. You can pick any of them. They are all so interesting and so moving. I'm a regular listener now and look forward to it very much. So I recommend that you also do that. Thank you. And so our social media comments, we extended book pickups for patrons because of the weather. And one person was a fan and they were happy about it. And then another person let us know how much they love shelf service and hope that we continue shelf service after we open the library back up for regular use. And I won't say to this person, we will, but I will say to this person that we are likely to because this has turned out to be a great service and one that we enjoy doing as much as you clearly like receiving. So thank you for the great feedback for that. We also had praise for access to ADL databases, which we're proud to offer to our patrons. And this one was, this was a nice thread about Westgate. People talking about places they would go and what they would do and work. And so we had Daniel O'Connell and Phil Christman talking to each other. And both of them had very complimentary things to say just off the cuff about Westgate. And so that's always happy and good to see. Thank you. This is another person who was obviously very happy. And this is about the databases and the access to the databases. Okay, thank you. And this is someone, we hear this a lot when a family or when someone's leaving Ann Arbor. They let us know how much they're going to miss the library and they know they're going to miss the library even before they're gone. And over the years, I have actually had emails back to me from people who've moved, who want us to know how much, if they had known what a great library they had when they lived here, they might have used it even more. But after moving away, they now know what they had. And so those are, I always try to be as generous with people as I can and say, go out to the library in your community, you know, explore it, talk to people there. You know, you can always make recommendations for things that can be added to a library system, but we really love seeing these. Okay. Thank you. Um, this one is about, um, opening and why we aren't open. So this was a complaint about not being open for browsing with my response. And, um, I did clarify with this person that we're using the county's, um, My Start map, um, that, that we're using the My Start map from Michigan. And in terms of, um, the, the, when the risk level for infection is low, our transmission is low. And I explained where they could find it and how they could look at it and, um, the, where we are now with high and how we want to get to low. And Washoe County is still at high. I, you know, we all check it and look at it. I did not address the concern about Myers, Kroger's and Walmart. I don't, I didn't get into that. But, um, just, just explained what we're doing and how we're doing it. So. Thank you. And this is one, uh, a lovely comment about the Tree Time Puppet Board Meeting. And it, um, if you haven't watched the Tree Time Puppet Board Meeting, everything else we got online, you need to go do this. Um, this is so well done and so funny. And this person clearly, clearly appreciates it. So it's a long email about that. Okay. Thank you. And one last one. Oh, it's about, um, we skipped it, but it was a person who loved the library and talked about how long in nineteen sixty-six, when their family moved to the life, to Ann Arbor and how their parents' date night was at the downtown library and how they loved the library. So another one. So that is my director's report. And I'm at, I'm happy to answer questions about any of that or anything else that you might want to ask me about consequent to this. It's a lot. So apologize ahead of time. But it's all good. It's all interesting. So.
I went to Jacob and Sean's, um, event today on Zoom, which was called, I Heard Ann Arbor Used to Be Cooler. Um, and it was, it was delightful. And one of the things that came out of that actually, um, was, uh, there were actually a lot of, um, there were some current undergraduates. And then there were some um, other folks who had come to school at Michigan and talked to just about how different it was to move to Ann Arbor from whatever place they came from. Um, and even though those of us who have been here for long time are like always lamenting the thing that doesn't exist anymore, um, Ann Arbor still holds a lot of charm.
Yes. Yes, it does. Yeah. So thank you, Jim. Anything from anyone else? Any other questions about, um, any, anything we've done?
Hi, um, I'm interested to hear a little bit more about the, uh, Detroit Public TV, um, partnership. I think that's such a wonderful opportunity, especially because, I mean, the, the Ann Arbor District Library Storytimes are incredible. So I'm so glad to hear that. But can you, can you tell me a little bit more of like, is it going to be broadcast on TV and available online? Like what's?
My understanding is, my understanding is both. So both. Right. So it will be on TV, but it'll also be online.
Wonderful.
But it's part of their Michigan Learning Channel. It's part of the special, um, a special thing that they're doing specifically um, to reach children who are in that gap of access. So.
That's, that's wonderful.
Yeah. And they saw what we were doing on ADL TV. And that's where their interest began. And so that's what they're using is what we've already produced. So, and we're happy to be able to do this. So. Thank you. Any other questions? And that to start in March, Anna. So, yeah. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Oh, can't hear you, Jim.
All right. Sorry. Um, we're shifting over to old business. Um, we've got Len to update on construction projects.
Uh, good evening. Um, I'll start with, uh, the newest old project, which is Traverwood. Um, you've probably had an update. We had a water break last night in the elevator pit. It's been repaired. There's going to be some follow-up work to, uh, prevent it from happening again. Um, but happy, uh, to report that it wasn't as bad as originally thought. And we were able to get it repaired pretty quickly, you know, early, late, or late morning. Um, so we'll be able to open tomorrow and, and back to business as usual. Um, we've got the generator project. Not a lot has changed there just because of weather. Since the last meeting, we, we have done a lot of the interior, uh, pathways to get conduit from where electrical will come into the building to say the mechanical rooms or the mezzanines. Uh, so a lot of that's been done this past month. Uh, once the weather breaks, I think we'll have everything in place to, um, start doing the exterior work. Um, a lot this month has been working on consumption loads and making sure everything's correct. So when we start the project, it'll, you know, hopefully go pretty smooth. Uh, the youth bathrooms, we have one last, um, inspection scheduled. And I believe it's for this week. Once we get that done, we'll be able to bring some slide photos and show, um, everyone what that actually looks like with, uh, with walls and in a real, of, of space. That's, that's going to be our new youth restrooms. And then the video wall downtown, most of the electrical work has been completed since last month. We're, um, just finishing some of the details on placement of where the wall actually sits on the wall that's there. And we want to make sure that's done, um, before we run the electrical and a lot of the supports that are going to hold the video wall up there. So there's been some meetings this past week or so. Um, I expect another one this week and we'll finalize that. So hopefully there could be some slides for that as well next month where you get to see at least where it's going to be in some of the, the structure that'll be there, if not, if not the panels themselves. So, um, that's the big stuff for this past month. Um, does anyone have any questions? All right. Well, enjoy your evening. It was nice seeing everyone.
Thanks, Len.
Yep. And Jim, I want you to see, I want to see you with that gavel in your hand as well.
Thanks a lot. All right. Uh, moving on to the part of our agenda where we discuss, uh, Black Lives Matter and its intersections with, uh, the libraries, programs, policies and culture. Um, Josie, where are we going this month?
So I've already mentioned that we had the Washoe Read event with, uh, All-American Boys, Jason Reynolds and Brendan Kiley. And that we've had a lot, a hundred and thirty views of that, but it's there for anyone to see, to continue to see. We had a comment from a mother who had, who watched it with her fourteen-year-old son. And it was very positive and very good feedback. And they, she thanked us for choosing the book that was chosen, but for, also for having, you know, a very, such an accessible conversation by, uh, with these two men for the public. And so I wanted you to know that. Um, we also have this month, I want to point out, if, we have every day this month, we've had a quote from, uh, Black American about, um, issues around Black Lives Matter. And it's highlighted a, a number of people during Black History Month who might not have been known to have been involved in the history of the movement for, um, racial equity in this country. And it's every day, it's another quote of the day. And it's done with visuals. And it's very short. You can watch it on a video. And I, uh, I think that has proven to be incredibly interesting to a lot of people who've just followed it as part of their thing to do today. And, um, it's a replacement of the quotations we would put in the buildings during Black History Month, um, in the past. It was because we can't now, because people can't, you know, aren't going to be able to see them. So we did it a different way. And Shirlana Turner, uh, is the person behind that. And, uh, she's the hand that's drawing. And so if you take an opportunity to look at those. And so the other, the other part thing that I wanted to bring up tonight is the, um, mural project for the fence wall on Library Lane that we have ongoing. And I was, I thought this evening I was just going to be telling you about something, but it turns out I'm going to be able to show you something. Every letter in the words Black Lives Matter are being pulled from our archives. So each letter represents, they'll be unique. And they're from the ADL and the African-American Museum of Cultural Historical Museum of Washoe County. And so Eli's got something he's can, um, so there they all are. Each letter is different. And they've come from, so there, each panel will be about, um, that letter, where it came from. And so it's pulling from our archives. So it's local. So the photograph and the, the history that it's discussing is a part of this is local. So these will go all the way down the fence on Library Lane on the north side of the downtown library. Eli, is there any more you'd say about those letters?
Yeah. So each one of the panels is done by a different artist that was chosen through the juried process back in, uh, back in August. Um, and then there'll be a, a separate panel that explains where each letter came from. And there'll also be a web version that shows where the, uh, where the letters came from and allows you to link to the original documents. As well as some of the artists are producing videos about their process and a little bit about themselves and their practice to be, to be a part of this. So we don't have any images of the panels yet. They are in process and will, should know more at the next board meeting about an install date and, uh, getting ready to, uh, get this hung. And then hopefully, uh, an event outdoors, once such things can happen.
So that's my report on that, Jim. So very pleased about this. This turned out to be something far more interesting and creative than, you know, any of us had dreamed and hope, and we could hope for it. But this has really, really been great. It's going to be special.
Yeah, I cannot wait to see it.
And the e, and the emails that I've gotten from the artists about the opportunity, they're just the best. People are so, so excited about being able to be a part of this. So.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Terrific. Well, thank you for, for sharing that. I can't wait to see the real thing in real life.
Me too.
Any comments or reflections that people want to share? I also wanted to mention that our new board members will also be participating in the IDI, the Intercultural, um, oh my God, Development Inventory. I was like, what does the IDI stand for? Um, and will be a part of that exercise, which the rest of the board, uh, has already done this year. Um, thanks for that, Josie.
Yeah, I'll take, yeah, I'm working on organizing that. So I'll, um, I haven't heard back yet from the people involved in that about what their available timeframe is. So once I do, I'll have that.
I, um, I neglected to mention, and this is a different, this is related to, uh, earlier executive committee and, and, um, director's report that um, Josie, uh, has an, uh, an annual evaluation process, which starts with her writing a, um, uh, uh, an analysis of her, um, her performance for the year. Um, and that, uh, is due to the executive committee by March first. I want to let everybody know that. So she is working on that now. Um, there is a process for her, uh, evaluation, um, that was designed for us by Bridgeport Consulting a few years ago, which lays out a pretty detailed, um, timeline and, and, um, process for the full board. So, um, we'll, we'll share that, uh, again soon to remind everyone what those dates are. And I think then at the next, um, meeting, we can walk through what will be required of everyone. The first set of steps is for the executive committee. And then it kind of fans out into the full board. Um, and that process, um, culminates, um, in, uh, essentially in May, um, at the, at the public board meeting. All right. Um, that brings us back to, uh, the, the second round of citizens, uh, remarks. Do we have anything, Eli?
I'm checking to make sure we have not received any. Give me just a moment. None via email and none via YouTube. So no further, no further comments have been received.
Great. Uh, all right, everyone. That, I believe that brings us to the end of the meeting and we can simply adjourn. Thanks a lot. See you next month.
Thank you. Thank you all. Good night.
Thank you. Good night.